Good evening, everyone. I'd like to reconvene this public hearing that we had this morning to now go to the portion of the agenda where we're going to have an oversight hearing on the Department of Agriculture relative to the Crop Damage Compensation Program. And in accordance with the open government law, notices of this hearing were sent to all main media outlets and all senators, the Department of Agriculture, and other stakeholders five days in advance on January 29th, and a second notice was sent on January 31st, 2014. I see that there is a sign-up sheet, and if you, for those in the audience who wish to participate in this hearing, please do so by signing up and if you haven't done so already. I'd like to recognize my colleagues that are here, Senator and Dr. Elina Maschida, Mayor Leader Senator Tony Arda, Senator Chris Duane, and Senator Tommy Morrison. Thank you for being here. As promised, we want to have a friendly kind of exchange with officials of the Department of Agriculture as well as our farmers with respect to the Crop Damage Compensation Program. As all of you know, the last time this law was exercised was several administrations ago, and it made for a good exercise between the legislature and the executive branch in how best to go about implementing these kinds of programs that are available to help those farmers who experience crop damage whenever we have inclement weather. We had a roundtable hearing which resulted in an appropriation that was sponsored by Senator Pangalinen, which also resulted in trying to help the Director of Agriculture figure out the best and fairest way to implement this program. But throughout that process, it created some kind of anxiety from our farmers in particular because of the inconsistent application of the law. In one instance, agriculture said that affidavits would be accepted; in another instance, they said receipts are required. And so it's this kind of back and forth that we want to talk about tonight, and I've heard that the Director of Agriculture has been wanting to propose some amendments to the law on how we can prepare for these kinds of eventualities because we're in a tropical island. It does rain a lot, oftentimes heavier than others, and these kinds of things will occur. And so we don't want the recipients of these kinds of programs to, again, have to go through these kinds of anxiety, and they just want it to be fair, and they want it to be open and consistent. And so I see that the Director of Agriculture is here as well as some of our island's farmers. Let me begin by asking Director Taitegui to come forward, and we'll hear from her. Yeah, go ahead, sir. Come forward. So what we'll do is we'll have the Director here, and then we'll also have those who signed up to testify here as well. And so as you testify, you can make room for someone else to come up and testify, but please stay here in case there's any questions. And I'd like for the Director of Agriculture to be here in case, as you testify, you have some questions that you want to address to me as Chairman of the Committee, and I'll relay those questions to the Director of Agriculture. We want to keep this process this way, and so Benny Roslin? Yeah, come forward, yeah. And Matt Sablon from Agriculture, were you going to provide testimony or are you just here in case the Director has any? Okay, Rodney Santos? Okay, Director, I understand that you have some written testimony. I'll acknowledge you at this time to read your testimony into the record. Thank you and good evening.
Buenos dias, members of the 32nd Guam Legislature and also members of the Committee on Rules, Federal, Foreign and Microeconomic Affairs, Human and Natural Resources, and Election Reform. Guausi, Marikita Taitegui. Guau Director di Departamenton Agucatura, un Danklunas Sismasi para Hamdutodus for allowing me to update you on the Department of Agriculture Crop Damage Compensation Program. Please be advised that the Department of Agriculture provides services to farmers within its means whenever possible is needed amidst current shortfall in personal capacity and resources. Paid compensation to registered and commercial farmers with the department was based on Public Law 24-256 adopted in 1998 by 24th Guam Legislature in addressing the method approach in providing compensation to the farmers. Currently, 78 farmers were paid in the amount of 480,582.49. Present the Public Law 3299 funding from GIDA will fund also the additional 15 farmers who recently submitted their claims and is now being processed at the Department of Administration in the amount of 32,173.85, giving us a total in money value that we have paid out to the farmers of 511,757.34. An emergency disaster declaration was requested as a result of a natural disaster from the flooding, and a preliminary crop damage survey was initiated by the Department of Agriculture within 72 hours after the passing of the second adverse weather from Typhoon Francisco in the region. Upon the governor's Declaration of Agricultural Disaster Executive Number 2013-001, Public Law 3299 was implemented to appropriate some money to compensate the farmers. The delay in the compensation is due to the inadequate staffing and unavailability of vehicle for the farmers, I mean, for my staff to go out to do farming specia. You know, the last conversation to farmers was with Chataan that was 2002, which is 12 years ago, and at that time, the department was adequately staffed with resources. And also, we find that the hiccup in the delay is also due to the farmers submitting incomplete reports. Thank you, Senators, for your oversight of agriculture and your continued support and understanding in moving forward with the program related not only to farmers but to fishermen as well. Thank you, and Sizou Smakri.
Thank you, Madam Director, for your opening statement. I do have some questions, but we'd like to hear from the farmers who are here to testify. And then as we go down the list and hear from everyone, I have some questions, and I'll give an opportunity to my colleagues to ask some questions as well. So we'll just go down the line, and Mr. Salas, just state your full name into the record.
Okay, my name is Joseph Salas. I'm a farmer down in Aguej, and I am, I'd like to testify about this compensation, that I wasn't aware of the affidavit that we're supposed to submit, and it was twice that, you know, it was in the paper, they needed affidavit, and at one time, I went up to the agriculture to, you know, and they told me that affidavit wasn't required. So I'm just here to testify. Is it, are we going to continue with affidavit?
Yeah. Director, do you have a final position on what kind of document is required in order for you to process their compensation?
We were just going on Public Law 24-256 that stated receipt plus sole proprietor salary, so that's why we're, you know, we're paying them.
So you're not allowing any affidavits?
Because the reason why we're not allowing the affidavit was the fact that some of the farmers, you know, they just made their own listing, and they have it, and we told them that in order for it to be, you know, to justify your reason of as a receipt, you have to go to the vendors where you got this material or whatnot, and then they write it down, and then you go and sign it, you know, affidavit.
Did you, did you or any of your staff process any claim based on an affidavit alone?
I think he did. Actually, John Bora was my staff who was doing that, and, you know, that...
So you've processed some claims?
Those that were legitimate, you know, that we know that it came from the vendor, you know, like Wisco Company and Benson are the ones that selling. If it's coming from them, that they have sold you something, no, it doesn't have to be a receipt. If they have stated that you initial or something, they have stated that they have sold you this material, then you can go to your lawyers or notary and have it authorized that, you know. That's one way that we accept affidavit, but if it's just, you know, personal affidavit, listing of the different receipts that you have, and you have it stamped, you know, that to us wasn't legitimate, recent, I mean.
But isn't that an affidavit?
It's an affidavit, but like I said, the requirement is for you to go and initial from the vendor, something that you have purchased from them, because I'm sure they have records that you have purchased on Wisco, because that's where the farmers go to, Benson, and so those are precision.
So were all the farmers made aware that if they don't have their actual receipt, they can recreate their purchasing experience by going back to those vendors and having them initial?
Correct, yes, yes. That's all we're requiring, you know? Because anybody can make it wrong.
Okay.
Thank you, Director. I have no other comments, Senator, Chairman.
Okay, did you file a claim with agriculture?
Yes, I did.
And when you filed a claim, what did you have to do? Did you have to provide receipts or?
Well, the last claim that I had was the crop compensation.
Yeah, that's the only claim so far.
Yes, so far.
Yeah.
I'm satisfied.
But what did you do in order to get that claim? Did you provide receipts or did you provide an affidavit?
No, I didn't provide anything.
Nothing at all?
No, because, like, I went out there and explained to the Director or one of her staff that my farm is totally damaged because where I farm, there's right next to a creek.
Can you just speak into the mic because I'm...
Where I farm, is right next to a creek, and when we had that flash flood, it took most of my crops, my agriculture, and also the building, the shack that I store my, you know, my fertilizers and whatever.
So you just explained your experience to agriculture?
Exactly, Your Honor.
All right, yes, yeah. And you didn't have to provide any affidavit or any receipts or anything?
No, the only receipt that I could come up with is like gas receipts, which was like only $37.
But your compensation was higher than the gas receipt, right?
Exactly. Compensation on the crop compensation.
Director, that seems to be very different from what other farmers were able to do.
Like I say, you know, we're just basing on the law that says that you have to be paid according to the receipts you turn in, the receipts you turn in, and then also the sole proprietor labor you have to be paid, and if you don't turn in any receipt at all, we went ahead and pay you sole proprietor labor, we take like 50% off to penalize you for not keeping your record, you know? So that's where we are, that's how we...
Oh, so you're acknowledging at least 50% of the labor?
Yes.
Because at the time we talked, you said that you didn't think you could do it.
Yeah, but the law tells us that, you know, you have to, it says there that you have to pay them 50% of labor, something like that, you know, but it's in the law.
Okay, Mr. Salas, anything else?
Thank you, Director, and I have no other comments, Senator.
Yeah, thank you, sir, for your participation tonight. Can you just kind of stick around in case Senators have some more questions?
Yes, Senator.
Yeah, thanks. Mr. Roslin.
Good evening, Senator, with special you, I'm Maschida, Anthony and Christopher Durness, and Tommy Morrison. Good evening. Now, I am really totally confused because I do provide receipt, and what happened, they didn't count all the receipts. I did provide affidavit, and again, they say that they were not honoring. Now, by looking at this public law, they need to change because when you're looking at 50%, actually, they should really upgrade up to like 75 or 100% total back because you're talking about damaged crops. Even if the inspector goes there and declared 80% damage, then might as well just go for the 100% damage, and that should be compensated itself, not only for the seedlings and not only the receipts. And another thing, if farmers have the helper, let's say four, five, that also should be paid. It's just like when you married to someone, right? Then that individual, your wife is also accounted. So basically, the Director should go back and figure these things out because I know that, right, somewhere on there, I know they have funds, and compensate those workers also. Some areas, you know, they're low lying, and others, they're very steep yields, and, you know, like probably 60%, steep and 24%, and because of this flooding runoff, and that should be considered 100%. So if that's the case, like, what she mentioned, you know, if you have this and explain it to the inspector, then why not? Give all these farmers benefit out and give it 100% so they can be happy and also to sell their produce. I said now, nothing. In fact, the WIC program, I participated, but when? I look at my 24 mandala trees, right? And there's only five that's bearing, so how can I participate on the WIC programs? I look at my SUNI, oh my gosh, I have to wait for another six months. So all of this...
Mr. Roslin, just so I understand, and I could be able to repeat what you said, you provided receipts?
Yes.
And yet you weren't compensated to the level of the claim that you submitted?
Not that I'm expecting it, because what they, what, okay, what John mentioned is that not all receipts...
No, but I'm saying that your claim to agriculture was higher than the check that you received for your claim?
Yes.
So that you didn't get compensated based on what you submitted?
That's correct.
Do you think the issue could have been the labor portion, or do you think that your receipts weren't compensated to the extent that you submitted?
Some of the receipts are not counted, and also, as you mentioned, the labor.
Director, is there an appeals process that individuals like Mr. Roslin can go even after they've been compensated, just to go back and say, you didn't do this, and by what authority did you have to say only 50% of the labor shall be claimed?
You know, our Department of Agriculture used to have a Board of Commissioner, but at this point, we don't have any, we don't have any Board of Commissioners. So there, I, to me, you know, well, he can come back to the office and, you know, but as far as appeal board, we don't have any at the present time.
Okay, I guess it's something we can address, right, if we're going to update this public law?
Yes, right, right.
But in the meantime, you're open to looking at his case and see what exactly happened to him?
Yes.
Now, could you tell me where it says that you can only pay up to 50% of the labor?
On page four?
Page four of?
Of that Public Law 24-256?
Yeah.
The last calculation of payment?
It says only 50%?
In the events of receipt not available to substantiate expense consumable, then the department shall estimate at 50% the cost, estimate cost of the consumable.
It says 50%?
Yes. Well, in other words, this is...
But how about if they do have the receipts, then you have to...
All of it, we pay them for the entire.
But if they do have receipts and they do have labor, you don't consider any labor costs?
No labor costs. We don't consider only the proprietor, sole proprietor labor, that's what the law says. So we pay them, and also, we base it on the acres that they have. You know, if you are, if you have four acres, then you get 100%, and if you get only, you know, there was a formula that we did, and if, you know, we figured that if you have five acres, you get this much, but if you don't have receipt, we went ahead and pay you, but only 50% of the labor, sole proprietor labor. That is the Director's, you know, authority to do that, so that's how we deal with those people that don't have receipt. We pay 50% of the...
Mr. Salas?
Senator, can I ask the Director a question?
Okay.
Director, on the compensation, when you provided us the check, can you give us a copy of the breakdown individually? You know, like the federal, like few years ago, when we were compensated, they were giving us a breakdown of the labor and also the crops. Is it possible, do you have that on file?
Yes, you're welcome to come to the office anytime to open up your files so we can explain to you how you got paid. You're welcome to do so. It's in file, everything, all the documents are there, and the way how we paid, they're in the file.
Okay, thank you, Director. That's the only question I have, Senator, thanks.
Yeah, but again, Mr. Salas, whatever you submitted as your claim to agriculture, they paid it, right? All of it?
Exactly, on the crop compensation and the acres, the trees, the number of trees, number of plants.
Yeah.
That's where I got compensated at.
Okay.
But I wanted to know the breakdown on certain crops, and like the Director said about the labor costs also, I need to know how much were we being paid for that labor cost? That I don't know. So I'll try to make it up, you know, like next week, go up and see the Director, so I wanted to see the breakdown on how they go about making that payment.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Roslin, anything else?
I guess I'm going to go back and get the rest of the options.
Well, I was hoping that we could get some answers tonight so that we are able to get to the bottom of what it is exactly and how it is exactly that this program was administered.
I asked for also trees, like the mangos, the hutu, so what happened to that? If a person received the compensation for that, then why is he that not, I am entitled to that?
Senators, do you have any questions or comments before we go to the next? Senator Maschida?
Thank you very much, Senator. Thank you for being here. Mr. Roslin, so since you know that some of your receipts were rejected, were they the receipts for the trees?
Not for the trees.
So is it that trees aren't, were not allowed, Madam Director, to compensate for trees?
Correct, because there's, you know, they prioritize that we should compensate first the crop, and if there's still available money, then we compensate the fruit trees, and then the ornamental that has been propagated, and then the cattle, and then the infrastructure. So there's a list of prioritization, and so we paid the farmers and, you know, and with all those that have crops, and then there was a little list that came later on of, you know, some of the other incidental that we had to do.
So if, since there's a balance, will you be returning to these particular cases to see if compensation can then go to the trees? Is there a process?
Remember, Senator, we're stewards of the government money, we're trying to, you know, help out all the farmers at the same time, you know, we cannot just extravagantly pay everybody from, you know, from infrastructure to cattle and all of that. We prioritize with the crops first, we entertain all the farmers with the crops, and that's how we pay them out.
Yes, and I understand I'm not suggesting that we be extravagant, or hardly extravagant, but you yourself had listed the priority listing.
Yes, correct.
And so my question was, once we exhausted all of the claims for the crops, then are you going to the other levels or so that Mr. Roslin knows that there may be an opportunity to get some help?
With that question in mind, Senator, I would do whatever, you know, it takes to see what we can do to help farmers continually. But at this point, you know, at this point, you know, I, we have paid all the farmers of their receipts and their later prior to labor, and I, because like I said, this crop compensation program is just barely to make, you know, the farmers start, have something to start with, like a seed money, not to, not to pay them of what they plan, like if you're gonna, if you plant one acre of cucumber and you plan to, maybe your income would be 10,000 there, that's not what this crop compensation is all about. It's just to help the farmers to start on their feet, like a seed money, and that we tried to do that to compensate every farmer. We didn't deny any farmer at all. We compensate every farmer that filed a claim.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening. I just, every farmer, how many registered farmers or bona fide farmers, Senator?
According to our record, there's, I think, 500.
500.
So at least there were only 93 that we compensated that came into file.
So, okay, so out of the 93, I mean, 100% of them, at least, were addressed.
150, 150.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. I think what we're trying to establish here is how this law was administered, and if you've had any challenges administering the law, then the legislature stands ready to make those amendments. But so far, I don't think there's anything deficient with the law, it just seems as your testimony provides, it's your lack of personnel and your unavailability of vehicles that made it the most hardest reason why you couldn't implement this. But in terms of affidavit or no affidavit, or just a general feedback from the farmer that they lost a lot, and then to be compensated based on that, I think you have the attention of all the farmers tonight wondering and asking for an itemized report of, I think we're asking to be transparent here, and the farmers don't even know how they were compensated. Yeah, they don't, one farmer's hearing that you compensated for tree damage, and then the other one is hearing that you didn't.
We didn't compensate anybody for the trees, you know?
Well, he doesn't know that because he doesn't know what you...
Well, like I say, you know, we will, my office is open, and anybody, the farmers, if they need to know the detail in how we paid them and their receipts, you know, they're welcome to come in because our record stands in our file so that any farmer that comes in, I want him to know the detail of how we paid them, the receipts that they turn in, how come this one's not paid and how come this is paid? Then we are there to show that to them.
Do you have any, anything in writing or anything you want to report now as to what we need to amend in the law? You mentioned publicly over and over that you're gonna get with the legislature, you're gonna give some recommendations on how this could be easier for you. Do you have those recommendations tonight?
Well, the only recommendation that I really wanted to maybe perhaps is that we should require all the farmers so that, that way we will know, you know, who are the real farmers, if they're keeping records, keeping track, because see, this is what happened, no receipts. Most of the farmers that came in, no receipt, what are they, you know, they are not keeping records, so we just want to maybe educate these farmers that they should learn to start keeping receipts, and eventually, we'll have to have required whoever is commercial and bona fide farmers should have Schedule F so that they have a contribution to the governor, you know, to the government. They file their Schedule F, and that way, it's very easy when they, we know that they're filing Schedule F, it's very easy to know that you're a true farmer because, you know, your receipts are there, it states on the Schedule F that you need to, in order for, you know, for you to not pay tax or whatever, not, not, you have to show your income, how much you made, and the receipt. So maybe that's one way that we can really track who are the true farmers on Guam, you know, who are buying, you know, and who perhaps are the one that needed, that has to be compensated because they're true farmers, you know, they keep records. In fact, that's the law, the law says for you to, in order for you to be compensated, you have to have receipt. That's very straight there. It comes on the receipt, that means the farmers have to keep records, and keeping record, like I said, and we'll be contributing to the government coffers when we file our Schedule F. So I think that's one way that we can really detect who are the true farmers.
But aren't these farmers registered with agriculture already?
Yes, they are registered.
So if they're registered, how are you determining if they're...
Yes, they are registered, that's how we pay them, you know? We're not going on, we're not, that is my recommendation on my feeling on, the next time around, you know, when things happen like this, it would be easier for the department to track who are the real farmers, you know? But for right now, we just went ahead and paid every farmer, we didn't deny anybody, based on the receipt according to the public, paid the farmers according to, you know, to the receipt that they're turning in and the sole proprietor labor.
Okay. Senator Duane? Okay, um, Senator Duennas?
Thank you, Madam Director, I I I think so that, this is just my opinion, man, I don't think we need a public law for this or to amend the law. But I think that um it's critical enough with maybe misinformation and miscommunication in terms of the final report. You would, you could redact names and not have to put um, you know, the actual claim, but maybe you come out with a final report um when you're done and it lists, you know, uh, all all of the fa- all of the uh compensation claims and what was, what was paid out. Um, you know, so so Farmer A, you know, uh, it was um, you know, uh, um, ten thousand receipts, um, you know, X that was paid out and whatever. So that at least, you know, you could even, if a farmer came to you, said, you know, we're, we're hearing this or this or this, say, you know, this is, this is our after action report. This is what happened when we closed the books on this claim, on this uh circular in terms of the executive order. And uh this, we're not gonna get personal, we're not gonna make sure people aren't arguing like so and so got this or what, but here's the actual report um, you know, with names redacted and individuals who claim, but this is based on this claim, this claim, this claim and this is what was paid out and how it was paid out, so there's really no room anymore for uh, you know, uh people to be confused or if they're, in case there's uh some, some misinformation about who got what or how it was processed. Um, you know, and you know, ma- I think, you know, that's, that would be a a fair report uh from, you know, so maybe that that can just be adopted as a policy internally uh for yourselves, you know, Madam Director, that that's something you could do, so. Anybody, like even myself, I just wanted to know, or it could be put on your website, I can go get a copy and say, there was ninety-eight claims and every claim identified an itemized uh dispersment, uh, and so I could see even just by looking at that, was there a discrepancy? You know, what was it, did, wait a minute, you said no trees and this one and this one says tree, that's my suggestion, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Okay, um, if you two would like to just stay back, because I'm sure you wanna listen to others' uh feedback or any uh testimony or suggestions they may have. So I'll, I'll excuse you at this time, uh, Mr. Salas and Mr. Roslin, uh, thank you for your testimony and just stay very close, because we're gonna get to the bottom of this. And I'd like to invite up uh this, Mr. Vicente Velazquez, were you going to provide some testimony or or you're just going to observe uh? Please come forward, it's it's up to you. No, no, none of that tonight. And then uh who signed up after Vicente Velazquez, um, Sir Nicholas, I can't read the writings. From the Farmers Co-op, who's?
Alita?
Oh, Alita, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, not tonight. Mr. Bill McDonough and uh Ernie Wistic. No, no, we're. Anybody else wishing to um be a part of this panel, because? Okay. Okay, um, you can start uh and just state your name uh for the record.
My name is uh Vicente Sir Nicholas Velazquez, I'm a farmer from Dedado.
Go ahead.
And the compensation uh, I'll I'll start out with saying, I've been a farmer since I got out from the military back in the eighties, this and that. But a compensation that we've been having before, way back, I think this conversation we have is more lenient. And before, the agriculture was a full hand, that time back in the eighties. Now, when you understand the situation with the Director, when coming back, the agriculture's going smaller and smaller. No more support from them, the farmers. Just why I'm saying this compensation is better of something than nothing. Okay, but like I just heard earlier, we've been having saying, some person saying, there's some person saying that. Even myself, I heard one person saying they have compensation with this, this much, with no receipt. And me looking at his farm, I says, what? You know what's that mean? I have more plans than what I'm seeing. So like I said, the agriculture didn't have the the manpower for the inspection going out there. I understand the point there, but just verbal communication for agriculture helping the farmers. You know, so I'm not questioning that right now, but I think I'm saying that uh, we have this other ring that came in. It's hurting me, because what they gave me just went out, went out and just drove my pocket. And uh, I'm hoping I can start back up again. So, that's it for me, I think all we need is work on the uh avi- work on the agriculture. I mean, uh, they need support also. And uh, from back in the eighties to now, it's like a haunted house up there. Thank you.
Thank you, Director, did you have any uh claims, recent claims from this recent uh bad weather we had? Well, you might expect one.
Do it, do it.
No, I asked her if she had any uh, if agriculture received any claims from the recent bad weather we had. Uh, and then she said, nanya, and I said she she might expect one from you.
Really? I thought I was asking the senators?
Yeah, no, no, there's a program that exists to provide for this compensation immediately and so this is what we're trying to do, to make sure that as we have more people in the future needing this kind of um help that we don't run into the problems that we had, so if we have to memorialize what we have to do uh in law, I'm sure that we're open to doing that, but for now, uh, as um Senator Duennas uh pointed out, we need to fully account for how these people were compensated, uh, so everybody sees that it's fair and everybody was treated the same way. But so far, that's not what I'm gathering, is that there, agriculture some has uh, still has some explaining to do. Okay, um, you you can stay, sir, uh, I'll just go down the line, Mr. McDonough, go.
Okay, yeah. Uh, my name is Tom Bloss, I'm also a farmer. Uh, I think the bottom line is that it don't matter whether you're a big farmer or a small farmer. The bottom line is that you have to present these records, that's what the law calls for. Uh, the Department of Agriculture has a bona fide farmer listing, but that doesn't make them qualify for this crop compensation program. Because a lot of them don't have receipts. All that bona fide farmer listing that they have is a, a listing of all those people that uh qualify under the agricultural water rate. So just because they're listed there as bona fide farmers, doesn't mean that they qualify for crop compensation. Um, Tita brought up the idea of uh using Schedule F to report their farm income. That's, that's a good idea, but I think they still have to justify uh their losses through the receipts that they have. Because the uh, what they're reporting in their Schedule F reflects the expenditures throughout the year. It doesn't necessarily reflect what they spent on that period where they lost their crops. And so, you might have a hundred thousand ex- expenditure for the year, but that doesn't necessarily mean that that uh, all that went to uh your loss. Uh, another thing that was brought up uh is the uh, that the prioritization lifting. The priorities with the short-term crops, your vegetables. Then your ornamental plants, livestock, so on and so forth down the line. From my experience with crop compensation, they never compensate for anything else after their crops. So it seems like there's always monies that's uh not available for those people. So if they cannot be compensated, then either, you know, get them off the list or get enough money to compensate them. Uh, Schedule C also should uh be included, uh, to cover uh, me, I'm an ornamental uh farmer and I have to uh file Schedule C, not Schedule F, but I can do both, because I'm also doing uh uh crops. But for now, I'm only filing Schedule C. But, you know, I think the bottom line here is just record keeping. And I think the Department of Agriculture needs to uh, uh, call all these farmers in and sit down and discuss this program. Because this is an in, in out, in and out, a problem that we have every time there's, there's crop compensation. And whenever we have this, you see a whole bunch of people coming in. And so, that's about all that I'd like to uh include.
Mr. Bloss, thank you for your uh suggestions, uh. So did you submit a claim to uh agriculture for the crop part, but not for the ornamental part? Director, did you compensate any claim beyond the short-term crop damage?
No. Uh, we di- we tried, like I say, we tried to compen- only the crops.
Okay, so this time around, you just stayed with that uh, so, okay.
You know, we don't, we're, we don't have that much money, we try to uh spread them on all the farmers, so that's why we.
Okay. Okay, um, Mr. Mr. Wistic?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Senator Yamasita, Ad uh Duennas and, I keep forgetting your last name. Morrison. Buenas, and happy day. Uh, one of the reason why that I, I tell myself that I should be here in this uh oversight is because I see inconsistency. Very inconsistent. When I first filed my claim as a farmer, I was told that, go ahead and make an affidavit, I said, well, but the only, the receipt for the labor that I paid out is on my calendar, well, bring in your calendar. So I brought in my calendar and uh, sat down. And I listed all the, the workers, their name, where their, a lot of them, they shortcut their name and I don't know whether that's their true name or not, but but I have all the records on how many workers I had for two months. And then I asked myself, I said, Jesus Christ, should I, should I get paid too and my wife, because we work harder than than the workers, we we work from sunrise to sunset, even when the sun is down, we're still working. And then I I asked, I did ask uh Zambora, and I believe the Director, can I get paid and my wife? Yeah, just, just write down how much you, you think you're worth, and I, I said, God, if I'm gonna put down how much I work, I don't think the government can afford me. So I said, well, I'm gonna be reasonable, I'm only gonna charge seventy-five dollars a day for myself and seventy-five for my wife, so that's a hundred fifty dollars a day. And I multiply that by so many days. And then I, I put in all my, my workers, uh, how many days they work, I pay them fifty dollars a day. And I multiply all of that up. And then I turn in all the receipt that I have, and I believe it came up to around twenty-six thousand dollars. And uh, then I got a phone call from Department of Agriculture, say, how many acres did you say your damage was? And I, I told them the calculation, how many acres, but I just kinda, kinda guessed it. And then they, they took that, they took my acreage report against me. Oh, according to the calculation of the University of Guam, that was thirty years ago. You can only get paid so much an acre. So I said, wait a minute, this is not fair. Why are they using the university's calculation that is not, it it is thirty years old? And I, I can say on the record how much I got paid. I believe they gave, they gave me five thousand five, I mean, ten thousand five hundred. And when I look at my crops, this is what I had, the corn, if I was to harvest that corn, I would have made around thirty thousand dollars, that's on the corn alone. I planted two thousand eggplant. The eggplant alone, if I was to harvest, I got the eggplant can go up to two to three years. So, never ending. Uh, I said, well, maybe another twenty thousand on the eggplant, so. Right there, you know, and then I got uh, I got some pizza, and I got cucumber. But then, we got good news from the Director, oh, we're gonna compensate uh, uh, we're gonna pay you guys uh twenty dollars an hour, it's better than your calculation. Oh, I said, that's good. In the beginning, when I started asking, they, they really don't know what to do. You know, I'll go ahead and say this. This is what they're telling me, they don't know what to do. So how can I believe them that I'm only worth ten thousand dollars and now they're saying, we're only gonna pay you fifty percent? So where is the fairness? It is inconsistent, it's unfair, it's mistreatment. The storm came by, we got paid months later. I am ashamed of myself, because I had to go apply for food stamp. Every time I go to buy, buy something at grocery, I take all that food stamp, I say, that's, that's not me. I farm in the States, elephant garlic, I ship it all over the west coast, never have any problem. I don't, I don't try to take a notice with the federal government. And then I come to Guam and this is the kind of treatment I get. It's unfair. And months, and months after the storm. Then the little money that they gave me, I went and bought fertilizer and seeds and I paid my water and power, and I'm down to zero. Then the storm last week that hit me, I got five thousand feet of corn. Uh, I'm planting like five thousand seeds every week. So luckily, I only put in five thousand. But the total number of plants that I put out, I used forty-two bags of fertilizer for all my plants. And all of those fertilizers are gone, all washed away. And that five thousand feet of corn, I lost it all because they didn't pollinate. They started pollinating before the shield comes out, because we had four days of overcast and the plant don't wanna do nothing. But the, but the pollen didn't, didn't stop, as soon as the sun comes out, it opens up and the shield is not there yet. So I lost that, I don't know how they're gonna pay that again. Some farmers are paid without receipt, because they lost something. I got receipt, and I don't get paid for all of it. You know, if you're not gonna pay us, like what the law says, then draw away the book. You know, if you're not gonna pay us like what the law says, then draw away the books, never mind the farmers. Never mind the farmers. Because we're nothing, we're being treated like dirt. We are like scumbags. We're there, it feels like we're out there begging all the time. So take out agriculture in Guam. Never mind the co-op that they're gonna build. If there's no true support. You know, in the beginning with this co-op, I said, "Why are we building this building when we're not getting support from our government to make sure we succeed, so this will succeed? Why is the carriage before the horse?" So I'm only, you know, I, I just want, I wanna equal treatment in all fairness.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Wistic, Director. Could you explain again why in one instance, I, I, I thought you made me understand that if, uh, that there's a formula per acreage? But that, that that was a tool of last resort, if in case there was no receipts or no affidavits, where someone, a farmer can go to these companies and, and try to recreate their, their, um, their experience and what they paid for. You were going to default to that formula. So can you make us understand based on what Mr. Wistic said? I mean, here you have a situation, earlier you said you honor the receipts. And if there's, um, no receipts, you would honor an affidavit based on going back to all these places and having them initial. And earlier tonight, we heard that you'd also honor if someone came and said, "Agriculture, this was my damage, and this is what I think I should be compensated." So now you have Mr. Wistic testifying where he provided all the receipts. What you paid him is less than the twenty thousand limit per, per claim. Can you explain?
Uh, perhaps maybe some of the receipts that he turned in were dated, you know, uh, because we were taking only receipts after July. Within, you know, we figured that July, August, September, that September is when the, the flooding occur. So we figured that, you know, they bought their stamp by July, August, September. So perhaps some of the receipts that he turned in was, you know, purchased before the, that July.
But, but we're in the rules and regs, say that there's a cutoff date on when those receipts, uh, shall be submitted.
Uh, well, you know, like I say, you know, it's, everybody understand that it takes only one and a half month to grow a cucumber? Or maybe two months only to grow, so that's where we based on, you know, that, uh, that, uh, plants don't grow five months. Maybe if it's a fruit tree. But a regular cucumber plant, eggplant, it only takes two months. So we figure, we were a little bit lenient, we gave them, uh, July, August, September, three months, uh, and we, we were, we accepted. But those receipts prior to that, we figured that those probably they already, uh, they planted, that they planted on the ground already, was harvested, and they made money.
But you, but you make that assumption, what if, what if he bought those seeds or fertilizer months ago and then they just planted it, uh...
And those we considered too, some, you know, we were just talking with Tom. We considered those that are purchased maybe like irrigation, you know, that have bought maybe a volume, a quantity in order to get the discount. So we, we could make that consideration too. And based on your reporting on, for that, uh, you know, that time, that's where we got, we got, you know, we kinda put it together. Based on your reporting, it's not my, you know, you, you come in and you file or came and you said, "I planted, uh, five rows of cucumber, five rows of, uh, uh, tomatoes, five rows of eggplant." And, uh, the UOG has, uh, you know, a, a table that, uh, we can get practical glimpse of what really is the expenditure for that, uh, particular crops. So that's where some of the farmers are confused, that, uh, we're gonna pay all the receipts that they bring in. No, it's only the months we told them that we're gonna accept receipt, July, August, because that is within the timeframe of when the, uh, uh, you know, the flooding period.
On my part, all of my receipt were those dates, all the receipt part of that, I did not include it. Only July and August. Specifically, Zambora says July and August, that's what I did. And then specifically on the receipt, on my calendar, only July and August that I bring in. And I still got that calendar.
Director, are you willing to look at his, uh, situation again as you...
Yes, we have called him to come in, so that, you know, we can make him understand.
No, 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 not to make him understand.
I want fairness.
I mean, you know fairness, so that, yeah, we have called him to come in because if he's not happy, anybody is welcome to come to the office. We, uh, we kept the file, their receipts, and then the, you know, their, their claim forms. We, uh, we didn't destroy any document, we saved them, of course, you know? So anybody are welcome to come into the office to look into and ask question why were they paid only this much and...
But on the issue of fairness, how who did they appeal to, to say, "Wait a minute, maybe you, you overlooked this claim, or maybe you should've calculated this and..." Because I, I'm very confused too, uh, you know, and I wanna say I rarely get confused, but this whole issue has really, I, I just can't wrap my mind around it. You know, you, you've gone from, if we don't have receipts, we have affidavits, we can recreate the purchasing experience. Then if you have, don't have all those things, you go by the formula. Why would you use a thirty-year-old formula when you have those receipts that substantiate the loss that they have? Why?
No, that's what we use, uh, according to the, uh...
No, 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 but you, you...
Only the receipts, we pay them according to the receipts that they turn in. Only the receipts that they turn in, that's what we pay them on. Uh, plus, we gave them for labor, you know, proprietary labor.
I think the department considers a farmer, you know, at worst comes to worst, they consider those other things. But I think the department's been very lenient.
But, but apparently not in Mr. Wistic's case, because first she said, "If they don't have receipts, you will use fifty percent of the labor." Now you just said, "With his receipts, you will include the labor, at least fifty percent of it."
Uh, no, the, we gave him labor for the full, you know, if he has receipts, for the full.
And I, a farmer was telling me. He said, "Only you, Mr. Wistic, and myself, you guys just wanna get ripped." This is coming from Marquita. "Estoy siente contento."
Yeah, let, let's hold off for that for now, but you, you obviously were not compensated to the level that you submitted your claim.
Like, Mr. Wistic, you know, you're welcome to come to the office and, uh, and, uh, we open up the, the records. And, uh, we'll show you how we pay you, and also the, like I say, all your receipts. And if there's a discrepancy that you are not, you know, like I say, we're welcome, you know, to do something. And maybe, maybe with this, uh, you know, uh, discussion that we have, we could have in the, since we don't have a board of commissioners, maybe we could have an appeal board established, you know? So then, then maybe some farmers and, uh, you know, and a few board, so that if something like this, you know...
Would you, you said you have all the records and you...
Yes, definitely.
Okay, keep them, because I'm gonna ask you...
Yes.
To forward them to the public auditor.
Yes, we should have, you know...
I think, well, I think if we get the public auditor to do some kind of third-party review, maybe that'll help you also, so that you can say to the farmers, "We were consistent, we were fair." But so far, Director, that's not, I can't put my finger that, that your department was consistent and your department was fair. I mean, if he's just testifying on the record that he submitted receipts within those dates, and you, you paid far less than what he submitted, I, I don't wanna keep going around in circles, I...
Let me say, uh, you know, the records, we kept every one of them. And, uh, so welcome, anybody's welcome to come and look into it, and we'll explain to him how we paid them.
And if you're, Mr. Blas, you're, if you're saying they're lenient, I wa, I wanna believe that, but it just doesn't, in the last five people that testified, can anybody say that they were all treated the same way? Just five people out of five hundred claims. Barely one percent of, just as a test case, you know, it's... I, I didn't even, yeah...
This situation doesn't happen all the time.
I know, sir.
And, uh, Department of Agriculture is very short-handed, they don't even have a vehicle to go out and make an inspection. So they can follow up on what's going on out there.
I know, um, Senator Morrison?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair, I, I just, uh, you know, I wanna thank the farmers here, I, I'm very new to this issue and learning a lot from all of you in your testimony. I just wanted to, uh, figure if there is a farmer's insurance out there and how much that, uh, that costs. Um, are there models out there? I think, um, uh, as I, I listen and try to see if there's a solution to this, aside from what's already been put in place, uh, I'm just trying to figure if there is a farmer's insurance, uh, type in place, and how much that would cost, and are there models out there that we could duplicate that would help address this issue in the future?
Senator, um, there is a farm services agency in Guam operated under the federal program that ha, are selling, you know, that have insurance. And it only costs seven hundred fifty to buy the insurance. So, uh, any farmers who are two farmers, you, I think, uh, can afford a seven hundred fifty dollars, uh, insurance, crop insurance.
Is there models out there, uh, Madam Director, that where the agency, uh, addresses that and facilitates that type of insurance?
Yes, like I say, you know, the farm service agency under Tom Camacho, he's the director for that, uh, uh, agency. And he encouraged, I think, Mr. Wistic's a board member of that, uh... And he knows more about the program than...
I'm the chairman, I'm, I'm the chairman for that program, for the farm, for the county committee for the Farm Service Agency. And we do have something in place, that the farmers, the farmers can come in and sign up. If you're making less than twenty thousand dollars a year, you can fall in under, you don't have to pay. Under, um, um, disadvantaged farmer. If, if you're making, if you're making less than twenty thousand dollars a year, it's free. But the farmer have to sign up. And then the, then Farm Service Agency have to go out and inspect your place, so as the NRCS. They have to go check your place and verify it. And then you have to start doing your homework, you have to start keeping all your receipts. This is why I have my receipts. Because I'm with that agency and I keep all my receipts, so that's what I did to Department of Agriculture. As a matter of fact, I took my receipt from Farm Service Agency, and I took away all the date before July, and then just this July that I turned in the same receipt that I turned over to U, the USDA. You know, if all of us can give the farmers, I don't wanna stop this law. Because I think this law is meant for catastrophic. Like, if the island is wiped out, then they will help us all. But there is a program in place already, and we don't have to reinvent it. It's already in place. All the farmer need to do, maybe we need to, maybe we need to amend the law that if it's a non-catastrophic, they should go sign up for the far, with the Farm Service Agency. So they don't have to pay when we have this excessive amount of rain, and let the federal handle that side. And if there's a catastrophic, then we, we take this law that we have now and implement that to the island. But just for adverse condition, I think the USDA can handle that. And this is based on your production. You should have a record of how much you produce per acre. If you decide not to grow crop for two or three years, then when there's a, an adverse condition or a typhoon, then they kinda penalize you. You're not, I've been, I was penalized, and I can't complain. They used to give me like, uh, so much an acre, but because I don't have the crops, they penalize me and they only gave me very little. So this will give the farmer the incentive of keeping the record. And if you don't have any record, then, then you, you got penalized. But there is, we don't have to look for a model, we have one already. All we need to do is register, have all the farmers that say they're farmers come in and register with the Farm Service Agency. And now we're talking about government of Guam, and what had happened here. So if we can amend the law for catastrophic storms, then we should use Guam tax dollars money. But if it's just adverse condition, you know, the federal's got a program for that.
Yep. Mr. Wistic, we are talking about, uh, what happened here with all these claims pursuant to this local statute. And I wanna recognize, uh, Vice Speaker Ted Nelson, who is the father of this, uh, legislation that I understand was amended over time by Senator Pennington and, uh, others. Mr. Vice Speaker, thank you for being here. But I wanted to ask, when you received your check, did you get a breakdown of what you're being paid for?
No.
So I wanted to ask if, because if you got a breakdown for what you were being paid for that amounted to ten thousand five hundred dollars, then you can understand what checks were not honored and what, um... Director, would you be able to give him a...
Uh, every time I call her up, I say, "Madam Director, how much am I gonna get?"
Yeah.
"Oh, don't worry, you're gonna get..." I said, "The maximum?" "Almost the maximum." Almost the maximum, and then when I got this, when I went and picked up my check, it bothered me because I pick up, uh, five thousand dollars, and then I saw a farmer that called himself a farmer, and oh, he doesn't produce, and he also picked up a check. I said, "Hmm."
Director, did you, did you have it where whatever their claim was, you can decide, "Okay, I'm only gonna pay half of that claim, I'm only gonna pay..." Because ten thousand five hundred is such a round, you know, round, rounded figure, that how, how did you get to that amount?
Uh, I think maybe he didn't get ten thousand five, maybe, but you know, we have a record, I don't remember with...
But that's...
I did, I got ten thousand five.
Yeah.
Uh, oh, I, I don't remember how much it's personally got paid on that. But on a record, you know, we have this, their folder, and then we, on the front side, we make sure that how many acres they have and, uh, you know, and how much, uh, receipt they turn in. Every receipt, we put, we list them down, uh, so, uh, like I say, it's, you know, the record side there to be looked at.
But you don't recall a situation where whatever the claim is, that you just made it fifty percent of that, uh, amount? Or you reduced it on your own, you don't recall a...
Yeah, because it says they're penalized, but if, if you don't have receipt, if you don't have receipt, you know, on the sole proprietor, uh, salary that we gave, we gave them fifty percent only, on the sole proprietor.
But you had receipts.
I do, I turned in an affidavit, I, I turned in an affidavit receipt, and this is their reasoning. Every time when I call up, oh, the, um, the attorney for the governor, uh, said it's, you can't use, you can't use labor, you cannot, we cannot pay labor out. This is what I'm hearing. We cannot, I said, "What do they know about farming? Are they out there working? Why are they the one deciding?" I asked the director, I said, "Director, be a director and decide for yourself, don't let other people decide for you."
So, so you've decided to include labor. With receipts, you're recognizing a hundred, a hundred percent of the labor? Fifty percent of the labor, I'm sorry. What is it?
If no receipt, uh, fifty percent, I think I gave you...
But with receipt?
With rec, with receipt, we pay them the receipt plus, there's a, there's, uh, a formula that we followed, you know?
It's right here, yeah.
A, a formula that we followed. There's a formula that we follow that if you have, uh, if you don't have receipt, we pay you only fifty percent. If you have an acreage of five acres, you know, we pay you this amount. But if you don't have receipt, we pay you only fifty percent. But if you have receipt and you have five acres of, uh, of planting at that time, then we pay you fifty hundred percent, plus receipt.
So you have over five acres?
I got, I got sixty acres.
I understand, I understand, no, just follow me. So you have over... So you have over five acres, you have all your receipts?
Yes.
And you're still questioning whether or not they recognized your labor cost?
You know, it depends also when you, when you.
What else is depending for him that it's not depending for others?
On 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 when you report your your acreage, you know? Because we don't, even though you have fifty acres and if you planted at that certain period, it's only fi- two acres. Then we pay you only for two acres, we don't pay you for the fifty acres that you have.
You know, Madam Director.
I mean, that's how we deal with it, you know, we just, what you reported, that's what we pay you on. If you know, that you only, you have a fruit print of only uh two acres, then we pay you according to the two acres. Even though you have fifty acres or ten acres.
But I'm still maintaining that fifty acres, I still gotta buy diesel, that's why you guys are asking me, how come your diesel is so too much? Because I still maintain it, I still mow it, although even if I'm not planting it. I'm maintaining it so that when I come and plant, the plant will be good, no disease. I still maintain it.
Any question?
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Mister Wistic, you did mention about the that farmer's insurance agency or farmer's services agency. How is it that we can get the farmers to participate in this, how do we get them to sign up? I mean, what is it gonna take?
Well, you know, when you say Pedro, I think a lot of people are scared.
Yeah, but I think that, I mean, if there's, if there's um an agency that out that's out there that is willing to help the farmers. And uh be able to, you know, help them realize some type of return, cause I I I don't think, and maybe I might be mistaken. That the crop compensation, I'm not sure if it's meant to reimburse or to uh compensate a farmer for a hundred percent of their losses. Or is it just to help them be able to start up again and 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 get back on their feet? So I'm just wondering whether, if we're able to get the farmers to go out and apply for the farmer's services agency. And in these times where, and you know, because I I my concern also is that the grant funding may not always be available. You know, th- this is grant, this is grant money that no one has to pay back. So there's gonna be a time where there might ne- might not be any funding available. And this farmer's services agency may be something that the farmers can rely on, on a on a constant basis. And like you said, on a catastrophic basis, then that that's where the crop compensation can come in to assist the farmers even further. Cause I think that with the farmer's uh agency, these natural or these um what they call it? Uh unforeseen uh weather circumstances will be able to go there and say, okay, well, this is what had happened, we'll be able to go back and and uh get a claim.
Can I just say one thing for the record?
Sure.
Due to the sequester, they cut us down thirty percent. I was expecting so much money, but then they took out thirty percent and that's all we get. Cause due to the sequester, we're we're having problem right now. Uh getting paid, uh it took a long time, they paid me a little bit of interest, but then they still take out so much percentage. And that goes to all the farmers throughout the country, they got so much percentage off. There's another program for the for the freight, if you're ordering fertilizer, tractor. The federal government reimburses you twenty five cents on a dollar. But even at that, they still don't, we're waiting for the farm bill to be passed.
Right.
So we're, so if that thing passes, then maybe you'll have some money in there. So even the federal side do have problems in paying out.
So is there, is there any other, is any other um besides the farmer's services agen- is there any other federal programs? That uh helps farmers with the insurance or with their crops or?
You know, we're we're very fortunate because we're we're really not paying the insurance. We're we're paying for um for uh service fee only. Because in the States, the big farmers are the lucky ones. Because they'll s- you go out and buy insurance from the free market, then the federal government subsidize that. I don't know how much, I don't know whether they did, they worked on that, where they're only gonna pay now forty percent or sixty percent. But they used to subsidize hundred percent, you buy it from a private sector. But this is meant for, right now, the the insurance that we, it's called NAP, for the non insured crop. It's uh it's meant for small farmers. Somebody like us and many small farmers throughout the country.
So again, how would, go ahead, Mister.
I mentioned in our last meeting that funding is gonna be a problem.
On on which?
For, you know, to to continually fund this comp- crop compensation program.
Oh, this one, okay.
So what I suggested back then, and I still believe up till now, that I think we should tax. All these producers that are coming to Guam, those that can be grown here. Put a tax on that and use that, keep that money, give it to the Department of Agriculture. And if disasters come up again like this, we'll just have them immediately relieve that money. Tax these producers that are coming in, those produce that can be grown here on Guam. That will make it even a more incentive for local farmers to grow. And also, you gotta consider that all these same crops that are coming in are bringing in the same pests. Same diseases that are gonna hurt our own farm. And another thing, all these produce that are coming in, especially from Korea, Japan. They are all subsidized, the labor there is a lot cheaper. The the farm here on Guam cannot grow because of the labor costs. So they're, so you know, they're highly subsidized back there and they can bring it in cheaper than, you know, uh than how we can uh grow it. So I think taxing those produce that can be grown here on Guam will provide that income for the farmers here on Guam.
Thank you, Madam Director. Do do you have a educational program that goes out to let farmers know what programs are available on the federal side? For that for uh crop insurance and things like that?
Yes, when I first came on board, you know, the UOG and Soil Conservation, this uh farm services that you're talking about. And uh Department of Agriculture, we we went village to village to present our programs. And uh like I say, uh you know, very few people come out, but uh very few farmers. But those are the program that we do, uh you know, we go village to village and I remember in in Iran, I think that's the most participant. Uh that came out when the Soil Conservation, UOG, Farm Services and Department uh did their presentation of all the different programs. That they that they can provide to the farms.
And when was that last done?
Uh well, like I said, when I first came around about.
Like two years ago, a year ago?
Couple, yes.
Couple of years ago?
Couple of years.
So maybe, maybe then what what needs to be done is to go out there or constantly uh have a public service announcement that goes out to. Let these farmers know what what is available to them, so that they be able to avail themselves of the insurance. Uh the Farmer's Services Agency insurance and whatever it may be, so that, I mean. If they know that the program's available, I'm pretty sure they would wanna do something to protect their their livelihood. So that they be able to provide for themselves and provide for their families on the on the uh the crops that they they sell. So I I think that's a step that maybe you may wanna look at and do it.
And also in the department, you know, we post posters there that tells the uh farm services are available. And uh the, you know, the programs that is being offered out there in the community, we have them, the Department of Agriculture. And also they, at the same time, you know, when they're coming for their uh to register for their for the water rates. Uh we tell them some of the programs that are available, that they can avail themselves, you know, so that's how we do it.
Thank you, thank you, Mister Chairman.
Thank you, okay, um Mister Wistic, anything else? Maybe we'll hear from uh Mister McDonald and then we'll follow up with some questions. Mister Bill McDonald.
Goodness, Senators, uh thank you again for letting us uh come before you. Um first of all, I'd like to um um show the appreciation for the bill that um started this thing after the. That's um very helpful for us. Um when I, when I went through the bill, um it was um. Based on receipts, okay, uh I don't know if you've seen the bill specifically. But um my filing cabinet at the ranch is a a box that's uh not weatherproof. Uh my my compartment in my truck, you know, I don't have a secretary. I don't know if uh Mister Wistic has a secretary for his receipts, but I don't. Um so what, the environment we're in is really uh adverse to our working conditions. Um it was very uh frustrating to hear a lawyer tell me that uh that's the way life is. You know, uh I offered him to uh come out to the farm and spend a couple hours with me or, you know, half day. And see how we work in our environment. But I wouldn't further down on the lo- on the law and it mentioned sole proprietorship. Okay, if you don't have your receipt, then we pay you by sole proprietorship. What do you, how do you pay a sole proprietorship? You go to the bank, right, you put your money in the bank, then you pay yourself? And then you file your tax, well, most of us do. So and then you pay pay yourself and this is where you you get your value. You pay you, pay your US in a sole proprietorship, you're you're an employee of your company. And that's the hard part, how do you verify that? Well, look at, you know, uh Director, we talked about that, about the SF uh for the crop. And uh you know, the ornamental. And this is, this is where, you know, I think it's more fair for us. Because we 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 gift it back to the community, we pay tax, okay? And then I come over here and see this formula. We're getting paid seven dollars and ninety cents an hour. Ernie, we're moving up. And I understand, okay, the reason why this formula came around was because there wasn't enough money appropriated. Okay, and uh you know, we we um.
Let me, let me just back up here, there was money that was appropriated, but it was item vetoed by the governor. And I'm sure there's still a balance in that account right now. Okay, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Yeah, but you see what I'm saying? Um we are, we are in adverse environment. And and uh I think we should take out the receipts as a mandatory or a first line of payment. And work with what we got or prevent tax, okay? Um just just for um, w- w- nobody mentioned about our cost estimate that we have, well, with U- UOG? Yes, it is outdated, but that's all we got. And it's a conservative, by today's standards, it's conservative. And let me just read you from memory, okay? What it costs to grow a banana is around eight thousand dollars, I think it was eighty nine hundred. Okay, papaya somewhere around there. Tomatoes, about six hundred, I mean, six thousand? Yeah, that's an acre. Corn, fifty eight hundred? An acre. This is conservative now, okay? And here we are talking about seventy five hun- seventy five hundred dollars for sole proprietor. Okay, we can't even pay to grow that thing. See what I'm saying? It it, we need to work with the law and with the department on how we we do this. And we are trying to work with them, okay? We are trying to work with them, it's just that their hands are tied from financing. With with what's appropriated and yes, you know, the lion beetle, but we still need to supply them with the resources. That inspection is very important. And it should be automatic, we don't have to wait for three months before they come out for inspection. And that's because of the way the law is written, okay? Who goes first, you know? Disaster, declaring disaster of the data. You know, but we need that data out there as soon as that storm stops. But they can't do that because they have no vehicle, they don't have, they don't have the manpower. So please, we need to help the department to with the budget. Thank you again, I appreciate this.
Mister McDonald, you're president of Farmers Co-op, right?
Yes.
Yeah, did you get any uh feedback from uh any of the farmers uh who are not here tonight regarding the? The application of this crop damage compensation program?
Yes.
And can you share those kinds of uh?
Um, one of the things i- is the receipt, okay, that's, that's the biggest complaint they have. Um.
But were you surprised to hear that they're, they were accepting affidavits?
Um. No, I wasn't surprised, you know, affidavit um.
So you knew that they were accepting affidavits?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so the people were that were complaining about receipts, did they, were they able to submit an affidavit?
Yes. Um, they 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 um, the complaint was that it um, they weren't validated. Um, you know, um they they didn't have more than just a ve- an affidavit. Um I got a complaint for, I've got some receipts that had no dates on it. Uh I tried to help the farmer as far as, you know, trying to get him, I said, I'll I'll follow up with the vendor and um get some dates on there. Um but most of the, most of the complaints was the not being able to provi- uh provide receipts, yes. And like I said, you know, that's a hardship, I mean, that's 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 a great task for a farmer to keep receipts. Um once the co-op goes up, that's one of the things that we will be helping them out. Um you know, our goal was that um at the end of the year, you're gonna get your ten ninety nine. And and your and your uh receipts. A- and and we're working with um SBDC also and Department of Ag on how to work this out. You know, we're we're gonna be coming out with all the documents that a farmer needs at the end of the year or during the year.
Senators, any questions?
Sarah Tony. Thank you, Mister Chair. Madam Director, you know, you stated about how much, how much was paid out to uh to the farmers? And how much you have, what what is your balance left in your account for the crop compensation? Do you still have funding available in in your crop compensation after you paid out all your?
I should say, you know, uh you know, the go- when the governor line vetoed that uh the appropriation? He gave us uh s- like three ninety, that was that from the veterans fund, three ninety, so we used that a lot.
Okay.
And then he gave us the uh supposed to be, you know, the the, he has the uh, the two hundred thousand was from the his uh transfer. For the disaster, but by the time we got in, you know, the other agency needed the money as well, so. So like I say, that's why we kinda s- you know, spread out this money to, because it's not only the farmers that need help, other agencies as well needed some money. So uh we were able to tap ninety three thousand from there and uh and the sixty thousand from Gita.
But.
It's easy, so.
But today you were able to pay all the claims that were submitted and then whatever's processed.
Yes, that's right, yeah, we don't, I I feel that uh that's sufficient, that's sufficient for the farmers right now. To be given, what we have paid them is sufficient, dirt, you know, so uh.
Thank you.
Uh like I say, you know, the farmers has to learn that rainy.
They have been paid for the ornamentals and livestock and all those other ones.
Rainy, we have. Well, like I say, you know, we're, uh, steward of the government's money, uh, the people's money. So we have to be very careful in how we, you know, uh, spoon out the money. So I feel that, you know, this is sufficient to help the farmers. I'm a farmer, I trade also and I, you know, I know how it is, but when you're a good, we should, uh, treat fa- farming as a business, as a business, you know, we should treat farmers as a business. You collect your, and if you, you know, you know how to save money for rainy day. And the climate change, you know, that's an issue now.
But you also have to follow the law.
Yes, and the law.
And with this law, it sets up these categories and you just stop arbitrarily on the first priority. And you made this legislature believe that you have more than enough, uh, funds for this program. But yet, you know that, uh, the money was there, but it was item vetoed. And maybe we could have gotten override if you still came back and said that more funds are necessary.
Uh, and like I said- Uh, that's what the farmers, you know, reported so far and that's all the claim that we can pay. Because that's the only claim that came in so far, uh, into our office, you know, as of today. Uh, and there's a deadline for them to claim.
So Senator, I asked you, what is your balance in that fund?
Uh, so let's say like, maybe like on thirty thousand left over?
Okay.
Thirty thousand.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
And there's no pending claims?
No, there's no, because you know, there's a deadline, the buyer of claims, uh, January eleventh was the deadline.
Did you have any claim for livestock loss?
Uh, yes, it was, uh, I think it was a livestock.
And you denied it?
Uh, uh, that livestock, uh, I have to look back, Senator, what were the, uh, the last claims that were made? You know, the thirteen, the fifteen?
Cause remember when we had our roundtable, we, um, heard that those are other categories that need to be addressed?
Correct, correct, yes, 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 yes.
Did you have any, uh, did you have any claims for anything other than crop damage? Short-term crop damage?
Well, you know, uh, ornamental says propagated ornament, that we can pay that? Not those that you just buy and sell. So I think that we, we, we took care of that also on the last batch that we had, on the last batch that we had.
I didn't claim my ornamental class, cause I knew there weren't gonna be enough money.
Yeah, and, correct, and like I say, we-
I didn't claim for my crops. Can I still claim my ornamental?
Well, the deadline is January eleventh, you know, the cut of date for filing is January eleventh. So we accommodated all the farmers that have filed up to January eleventh. We didn't refuse any, so that's where we are at.
Okay, um, Mr. Duñez, Victor Duñez. You guys, yeah, if you can still stick around, I'm sure you wanna hear what's, uh, what's being said, thank you. Victor?
My name is Victor Marcines Duñez, a farmer from Inuraham. I was told by the director that there's no funding whatsoever now. And now I'm hearing that there's a thirty thousand? Thirty thousand dollars available right now? And why is it that I was not paid for all those lives? Those fencing that are damaged from that storm? Kita, I respect you because you as a farmer too. But when I was talking to you almost every single day, right, Kita?
Correct.
Right? And I kept reminding you, when you gonna pay those fans that are damaged? Because the money that they gave me, I spent some butt wires to, to repair those fans. And some of my acres is not included. Because they only gave them with the receipt that are signed off from another vendors. But she will not accept your receipt. Personally, the one that I wrote down, they won't accept those. So I questioned her, why are you paying those people that don't have receipt whatsoever? So it's not fair from me to not claim those acres? Because I got eleven acres of banana field, just that field. I got two acres that are damaged, watermelon field, cucumber, lone beans. But I don't, they, when they told me, said, you need a receipt. But I submit some receipt, but some receipt are, they bump it out. So now I'm hearing this, it's a big, if you don't have receipt, you're not gonna get paid. But now, when they were paying all the farmer, they paid them without receipt too. So where's the fairness there? Where is the fair, uh, Kita? I hate to embarrass you here because I respect you and you're a good lady. But if you're gonna come up with fairness, this is not fair. For me and my family, that trying to save this government too. Because some field I don't even put it in because of the lacking receipt. And let me tell you about a farmer. When you out there buying fertilizer and you're out on the field, sometimes it's a strong wind. And that receipt flies out of your truck. And I cannot identify that receipt. When I go back to those, to request for a receipt from Wesco? He said, we don't have a record for you. They don't have a record. But some receipt, I took them from the past and I submitted to her. But when you're a farmer, believe me, sometimes it rains so hard. And all those receipt inside your truck are damaged, yes, that's my fault.
When you said the past, that's prior to July first, you submitted-
Prior before July first.
And she accepted it?
And she accepted it.
And then you had a cutoff for him?
Yeah, no, like I said, for, you know, if you fa- uh, buy a, uh, quantity of fertilizer, maybe, you were planning to plan, you know, several fields at the time you purchased. So only the, when you report your acreage, we know basically how much you're gonna spend on that. So even though you bought your fertilizer, um, two, three months ago, you know, we know that that is not for that field that was-
Oh, that was my example, that these fertilizers have shelf life. But you said, but we had to have a cutoff date, so July first was a cutoff date.
Yes, but tha- I was saying, saying that, you know, when you buy like irrigation? We purchased an irrigation price because it was cheaper price. But then, you know, the, the acreage that you reported is showing that you planted only so, so many acres.
Can you give us an ex- if you re- yeah. If you recall, what, what was your receipt that you submitted prior to July first, as an example?
Put a receipt-
For what?
For watermelon receipt, fertilizer receipt, some fertilizer receipt, but not all.
Yeah.
Because me as a buyer, sometimes I buy fifty, fifty fertilizer just for my field and it's still not enough. But let me tell you, with the rain, once it rain, it washes those fertilizer down, it's all gone. Especially just this last week.
Okay, Mr. Wistic, sir, what was-
This last week, wait, let me finish, Senator.
Yeah, I'm sorry. No, 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 I wa- I'm excited because I wanna ask him for an example of what kind of receipt he provided? That they didn't accept prior to July first. Was it fertilizer and seeds also?
I only submitted-
I know.
Receipt from July and August. I did not put in any receipt prior to July.
But you didn't know that she accepted receipt prior to July first?
They told me specifically only from July.
And then now, oh, Vic, you got lucky.
I was very lucky because-
Go ahead and, yeah, continue. Masueta?
So, but Senator, I'm still confused on this payment. Because I was told-
Even me.
That people that don't have receipt will not get paid. But still, they get paid. And that's why I don't submit those acres in because of lacking receipt. So I'm definitely confused. And then they told me there's no funding, it's zero, it's all gone, it's all paid out. But now I'm hearing a new story that there's a balance of thirty thousand? So that thirty thousand, give it to me and I'll fix my pa- uh, fence.
Well, I've always, I've also been asking for, under the Freedom of Information Act, uh, itemized breakdown of what you paid pursuant to this law. And I believe you cited the wrong law in your response to the FOIA request. It wasn't, it wasn't the crop damage compensation program. So I followed up with another letter asking then by what authority did you have to pay pursuant to that law that you cited? So even, even the things you're citing, it's just-
I gave her my receipt of those fans, because yes, they were healthy and those fencing. They paid me for that. But now it's damaged, so I was, she said, give it to me, I'll pay you.
And you had a receipt? And you had a receipt?
Remember, Mr. James, maybe your fencing was way back and it's already termite and, uh, now you're asking compensation. Yeah, well, anyway, correct, yes. And, uh, like I said, the thirty thousand balance, there's still fifteen more, uh, uh, that we haven't paid. So they're still in the process of, uh, paying them.
Okay, Mr. Wistic?
My, my question is, and I wanna answer now. Are we gonna get paid with the affidavit I paid? I paid an order republic, ten dollars, American money, I paid ten dollars for that affidavit. And I believe that if you make affidavit and you lie, you go to jail. And that's the last thing I wanna do is lie at my age. When I'm ready to meet my maker, I, I like to smile and, and just go peaceful. That's the last thing I wanna do is lie. And I don't think farmers are lying. And, and we are, we are, we are pictured as, we are liars. And that is no good.
Director, could you please, uh, clarify again?
You know, we're not calling any farmers-
No, 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 the, on the question of affidavits.
Yes, uh, like I say, you know, the, the very first time when I mentioned about affidavits? That you need to, you know, like, if you wanna put an af- uh, a list of, uh, fertilizer you bought from Wesco, you're always asking is for you to go to, uh, Wesco and, you know, for them to verify. That you purchased it from Wesco and, uh, ten pounds of Miracle Growers at Benson and then you can have that, uh, not to ask-
The only affidavit I have is for my workers that I paid them. And I, I am really cheating myself because I only gonna pay myself seventy-five dollars a day. And I made an affidavit also on that and I turned that in. And it's stamped. So I've been very generous. Not three hundred dollars a day each, but seventy-five dollars. Still, they cannot consider labor, this is according to their attorney, they cannot consider labor.
Remember, you know, we are limited in funding, we, we, and we try to, uh, spread the money among all the, uh, farmers that are applied. And, uh, like I said earlier, that, uh, you know, it's just a seed money that we're providing for the farmers to help them to start with on their feet. We're not gonna compensate them for, you know, the, perhaps the, uh, what they're expecting to harvest, to make when they harvest the field.
So it's alright for me to go and apply for food stamp? Is that you, is that what you're saying, man? Is it alright for me to go and apply for food stamp because you didn't give me enough money? You gave me money for seeds, but no money for fr- not enough money for fertilizer, no money to pay for the water bill? No money to pay for my power bill that I, I have to keep my corn? You didn't give me those.
Uh, you know, like I, my-
So it's not fair. I want an answer now, are you gonna pay me the rest of it according to the law? The maximum of twenty thousand dollars, so then I'll shut my mouth. I even, at one point I told you, I said, pay me eight percent and, and I'll shut my mouth. Fifty percent.
And I think that's the issue, if you add up the receipts and everything, it'll be beyond twenty thousand. But he recognizes that the statute caps it at twenty thousand. So I'm also interested to see that breakdown on how you paid based on his claim and the other claims.
Let me say, Senator, you know, we can bring the records down and, uh, we'll show everybody of how we pay each one. Because we have records on those things and we explain to them, you know, the reason why perhaps-
And you keep saying that you don't have money, there was money, but it was turned down because maybe they were told that they, they have enough.
Like I say, you know, uh, we're stewards of the government funds and, uh, we try to, uh, be conservative and help everybody. So that's how I-
But you're being conservative on the backs of the farmers and you're not paying pursuant to law.
And, and, and you know, like I say, farmers, we should be business-minded people also. So, uh, when the rainy day comes, we have something already in store to help us to go to, you know, to live.
Were you always that way as a farmer? Where from the very beginning, you were always, uh, business-minded, you always had money aside for a rainy day? You, you, you were able to go to your bank account and, and, and get cash out so you can replenish what you lost in the rain?
Like I said, I work hard and-
I understand.
I, I, you know, I, I make my money out of farms and I enjoy working the farm because it makes, gives me good money. So, uh, that's why-
But isn't the Department of Agriculture there to advocate for the farmers?
Yes, w- like I said, we try to help every farmer that came into the office, we didn't turn anyone down. We tried to help them to, uh, you know, to at least, to start with their farming activities right after the, uh, after the storm. And, uh, I feel that maybe, you know, uh, we have helped them. So, uh, anybody that, you know, doesn't agree with what we gave them, uh, it'd be nice to come over to the department. And we'll show you the formula or how we, the process that we went to in providing them the funding. And, uh, like I say, if it's, you know, if it's my own bank account to pay every farmer, I'll give them maybe what, you know, but like I say, we're stewards of the government money, we have to safeguard it and make sure that everybody's, uh, being helped. So that's my only answers to the farmers, uh, I feel that, you know, we have done our best to help them. And I know some are not happy about it, but the majority of them are happy about it.
I think they're not happy about it because there's a question of fairness.
I am not happy because this is what I was told. Bring in your receipt, write it down, how many workers do you hire? How much do you pay them? And when I bring those document in and I submit it to her, oh, I'm sorry, we cannot accept this. We cannot pay the laborer. Before I was so happy because I've been paying, you know, I hire people to, to help me on the farm. But when I submit those document in, they said they cannot pay those laborer too. I use gas, I use diesel, I use my tractor, but they cannot honor those equipment too. They're the ones doing all the job in the field. They said, bring the gas receipt, bring the diesel receipt, never burn your tractor, never mind your implement. They don't honor those things. Tractor use the diesel, I use gas for my truck. But they don't honor that, you need to have a gas receipt and a diesel receipt.
Yes, well, the, the receipt that I, you know, some of them turning is just, it looks like they, you know, it's not from the gas station. So that's why we're trying for them to, uh, because, you know, anybody can turn, so, you know, with the receipt, when you just make it yourself, then we, we feel that, uh,
Let me tell you about the gas station. I got a card, smile, like, you have to smile? I went to the gas station, global gas station, asking if they could record those back from July to September? And give me those receipt, they cannot trace it. And that's why I don't have receipt. But they cannot honor that, that I'm using those gas and diesel. They said, so we cannot pay you, not even your implement, not even your tractor. So we're all confused here as a farmer. This is not right. Thank you. This is my thing.
Well, I, um, I think that what we really can take away from this is that we really need some standards and some consistency. I think, uh, the next time we have comp- crop compensation issues, and it's gonna be a next time. We need to make sure that we understand processes, need to understand the issue of affidavit receipts. Uh, tonight I heard one farmer saying he didn't have receipts and he got compensation, he's very happy. I heard another farmer say that he gave receipts, but he didn't get the compensation. And then there's drop, there's differences of standards. And I think what we learn now is we make sure the standards are clear and we move forward. Um, I think Senator Tony has simply, for me, has reminded all of us again that the communication with our farmers has to be strengthened. Um, while we want them to come in, I think we need to go out to them. And I do think we need to visit and, and I look forward to seeing your budget, to see what, uh, we're asking, uh, for in, in your budget. And seeing how we can help, uh, strengthen the components of agriculture. So, um, there's a lot, there is a lot of inconsistencies. And, uh, you're all, all the farmers that have come to the table are very sincere. There's no doubt. You're very sincere. You're talking because of the hard work you're doing and because, because you, you really care about the work that you do. So, yeah, there's no question about that. But so how do we best support you? How do we take the law and implement it as it was intended to, which was to help you during really bad times? And then we also do, you know, all these, the USDA programs, Tom Camacho is, you know, you guys, like, some of you, I'm sorry, you gentlemen are already a part of those programs? But some of us aren't. So how do we help that? And then the definition of the different types of farmers, right? And so, um, whether you're a backyard farmer or a commercial farmer, I think you're all true farmers. And so we just, we need to, um, work on the standards and then work on, on the support of that. Um, but right now it's, uh, the January eleventh deadline is gone. Uh, the balance is at thirty thousand. Um, so I think the best we can do right now is make sure that the next time this happens, we're well-prepared and, and, you know, and we're ready. So that's what I think. And I think if anything, we have everyone talking now. Mr. Chair and I, I think that's a really good thing, you know, everyone's talking. So it, it, it should all get better. Thank you.
Yeah, what I'm, what I'm grateful of is, uh, Director, your willingness to revisit these specific issues. And so I'm gonna give you advance notice tonight that we'll come back in about thirty days. Again, to review this whole issue of how you paid the claims. And over the next thirty days, I'm hoping to hear that you resolved, uh, Mr. Wistic's, uh, appeal, that you resolved Mr. Snikless's appeal, Mr. Duñez's appeal and Mr. Snikless and the others that, um, testified, uh, tonight. You said that you're open to going back and seeing whether or not there was a inconsistent application of this, uh, law?
Yeah.
There's records that the farmers turn in, so we, we have the records to back that. Anything that the farmers turning their receipts and, uh, what they claim for and all those things.
But if, but if the farmer comes back and says that maybe you may have overlooked something and please reconsider, are you, uh, open to that?
Oh, open to that? Well, it depends on availability of funding.
Well, you keep saying that. We, we had identified funding and the governor, uh, item vetoed it. He reduced it.
Yeah, there's, but like I said, there's fifteen more, uh, farmers that we need to pay that are, you know, we have been working on their records and we saw that they need to be paid. So we have that fifteen farmers also that we need to pay.
I mean, I think, I think principles should drive us to the decisions we make. Not, not what's done is done and I've already made all the payments, there's still some more people that I have to pay and then just,
No, those that file, uh, before the deadlines, uh,
I understand, but I'm saying for those who pointed out that you really didn't, weren't consistent with how you paid it, what, what's their remedy?
Uh, I think we're very consistent in paying them, uh, you know, we, we have the, uh, the records that tells us we're really consistent on paying them. That's how I feel, you know, I have my, uh, chief in the ADS department that has worked on this for the last, uh, the last, uh, python when they had this program. In two thousand two in Tataan. Uh, I, I, I firmly believe that he's, you know, uh, he's, he did the right thing in paying the farmers and he was consistent in it.
Did you get my request a while ago asking for an itemized breakdown of, uh, all these claims and what you paid?
Yes, and I, I, you know, I randomly check on some of the, the folders that he has and I randomly looked at it and they were consistent. There were the, the receipt that, uh, are consistent to be paid, you know, from this, uh, program.
Even after what you heard tonight, you still think that everything was consistent?
I believe so, I believe so. But, uh, like I say, you know, we're human beings, there might be some errors along the way, but, uh, we're open to that.
No, I, no, I'm willing to acknowledge that. There may have been some oversights along the way.
Something like that, you know, along the way, so.
And you're open to reviewing these claims?
We'll do, yes, definitely. We're open to that.
And, and don't think about the thirty thousand dollars balance you have. Think about how this law has to be applied equally so that it's fair. And if you have to come back to the legislature and say, based on the review of all of these five hundred claims, the following submitted an appeal and the, and the department wishes to readdress these particular cases?
Yeah.
And that the, the X amount of money is, uh, still required in order to make these, uh, people whole. Are you willing to do that?
Yes, I'm willing to do that, you know.
Or the other recourse is the governor can still transfer more money into the fund to make sure that all these claims are paid.
Yes, so we can go one by one and verify.